First item legislative request appropriate one million two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars for the water plant upgrade. Within water capital improvements and allow the mayor of City Heath to contract with Kirk Brothers Company out of Alameda, Ohio. Per the specs, they're not allowed to say anything. Questions, comments?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm about a inch from the came out of service.
Um, as far as waiving it, it would be great and good because the sooner we get things moving, you know, we have the good weather coming out and stuff. The longer we wait, it drags things down. So, yeah, that'd be great. That's up to you guys, but it definitely helps. Speed, speed processing.
Committee, we got two thumbs up. Any other comments? Okay, second item, appropriate five hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Place two lift stations with gravity sewers. Comes out of wastewater replacement fund, contract with Terra Valley Escavating out of Belleville, Ohio.
We could waive that too. Just lets them get started quicker. You know, I don't want things dragging on in the fall or bad weather. And they have, you know, certainly time to do it and get that, whether it would get started on better off we got.
How much? That was slightly higher than the engineer's original estimates, is that right? But you still have a comfort level as far as the funding that we have available and, and, and the operation.
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely gonna be, I think the biggest improvement on this is that this lift station that we're running to, doing away with what I'm running to, uh, lift station on interstate route seven nine, it's got larger capacity, bigger pumps. So if anything does come in the industrial part, like, like right away or a decision that needs to, we'll have the capacity to take that right away. That's, that's one good thing. And then the other good thing is that we're just getting rid of, you know, another maintenance getting, well, getting rid of two of them.
What time line do you think that happens finished?
Sixty days.
For each of them?
Four, no, for the last one you just talked.
About about?
First one, you're looking probably about four months.
That's it?
If they start when they say that.
Yeah.
Start first, maybe.
Sixty days on the line, is that how?
Yeah, sixty days on the line.
Any other comments for the committee members? Okay.
And John, that, the planned improvements will take out both the old clarifiers?
Yeah, brand new new ones.
I just wanna ask the auditor that by waiving and paying this amount of money early, I mean, getting it started, I think, it doesn't mess with any of, I mean, cash flow or anything?
We don't even actually have the money until the seventeenth.
Okay.
So you guys, yeah, I don't think you can do it fast enough that I couldn't spend the money.
I just didn't want, you know, that, that amount of money to-
We can spend it.
You know, we jumped too quick and I didn't say anything like that.
Nice try. Any other comments? Third item appropriate thirty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and a penny, capital improvements for twenty-twelve Dodge Charger police car coming out of safety. Mr. Johnson?
I believe, did he want that waived? Trying to recall this now.
Yes, because they're holding the car.
So we gotta waive that one.
Any other comments?
That's, in caucus, you need to do that.
The money, the money that we received, or they received for the partial reimbursement on this cruiser. Will that go back into the general fund then?
Yeah, it's still like thirteen thousand dollars, yeah, right? Between eighteen and thirty-one?
Yeah.
Other comments? Any members?
Never get a trade-in value like that. It's better to wreck them until your insurance company, until your insurance company starts noticing that.
Yeah, I'll scratch that.
Yeah.
Everybody's sitting in the same spot that you were in?
Yeah.
Fourth item. Two thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars forty-six cents from the general fund for batteries and tribulator pads and turntable of K E D. And it's going from general.
That was from Tony.
That was?
I don't recall needing to waive.
I know that they expired as all the, the, uh, the ads and-
I don't, I don't recall him saying anything about wanting to waive that.
And I'll check, I can check with him.
Okay.
We're talking about the call.
Anything else? Committee, okay, thumbs up? Brian?
I don't see it on, on the agenda. What happened?
I have a question, just in case, this is supposed to go through, uh, finance, and like I said, we don't even see it here on tonight's, uh, agenda, but-
I got it as ordinance thirty-two.
What's that?
In the packet.
What do you got there?
Oh, sorry, John. I thought you were talking about the-
No, 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 no.
There's five.
Four here, buddy.
Yeah, there's probably five, if I have. And maybe the mayor will notice about this. There was a legislative request to redraft city auction proceeds for bicycle vehicle contents.
I, I can respond to that.
I, I just wanna make sure we're not having it.
I, I asked Lynn to pull that. I, there were some things in the legislative request that weren't exactly appropriate as far as the way things are done. I, I've shared that information with Tony. He agrees. And he is re, he is redoing that legislative request. There's no rush on that, but, uh, just consider that withdrawn and it'll be coming back at you.
Just the way it was drawn up and the way you listed the requests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and anyway, I just stopped that before we were in the midst of having to amend and everything.
Because it's not something that needs to be done tomorrow, so.
You're right. There, there, there was a legislative request, came out of your committee, should've been coming to mine. I just gave it back to him. He's, he agrees. Yes, thanks. You're welcome.
Who are the legislative requests? Are there any other legislative requests? Other items? Keith, I'm gonna take care of that one.
Yeah, the, uh, the bonds sold last week. We'll get the money, uh, two days. Bond for water plant improvement, one point five million dollars roughly. The all-inclusive cost, that's the real cost. That's important to understand, all-inclusive. Really, the, the rate was like twenty, uh, I don't remember what it was without all-inclusive. I, I look at the all-inclusive. Because there's, uh, underwriting fees, there's, there's the bank fees charged by Fifth Third Bonding, and there's, uh, bond council. All these things add up to, plus the actual interest rate. The all-inclusive cost was two point two nine six. Actually, Department Head, I was going by memory, I thought it was two point three eight. So it's actually two point, almost two point three, and that's the rate we'll be borrowing money for ten years from.
That's a heck of a rate.
That's an excellent rate.
I'm sure you'd agree, Kent, that's the news story coming out tonight, right?
Boring!
See the headline now.
Good, good try, man.
Good job on that, Ken. Good, good job.
You have another?
Yep, Ken.
I'm, I'm waiting for another other. I'm waiting for number two other.
Oh.
There is no other two either. Would you like to make it a two?
I'd like to be two over, whatever it is.
No mulligans, Kelly, no mulligan.
I'm sure the rest of you probably feel the same as I do, that, that speaker says them is just a piece of junk over there. Kind of embarrassing to have that many people in a room and nobody here and stuff, so, I mean, it's just a topic of discussion, but I think between now and the next couple of meetings or we have finance, I'm, we need to get someone in here to get a quote for a new system and trash that system and put a new system in and we'll figure out how the, I mean, what kind of cost it'd be, but-
I can instruct John Goff to look into that if you guys want to get some idea of the cost.
I don't know what the cost would be, you know, maybe if it's outrageous, we'll have to reconsider, but, I mean, I mean, I could've had a megaphone up there and talked it better off than that. I was looking for you to figure that out. Where were the paper ones at? Where were the paper ones you made? I was looking for that.
They're still not mine.
But that was just embarrassing. Well, they were hats, but they were all over the place, but, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, if you could have John Goff look into that, I mean, I'd wait till John's committee to even talk about it.
Yeah, they, they, they've had people in here for years trying to fix it, and it seems like they just can't ever-
Yeah, I don't say fix. I thought I meant it's too old.
I mean, really, a lot of that stuff is new. You know, the stuff on the, where the department head's sitting, you got, that's all new stuff.
Yeah, that might work, but I don't think it's a plug into a different-
The microphones are too new to go with that hardware that we got back in that CAD and just about.
I could bring in my kid's karaoke machine and be better than that, you know, I mean.
Long would you help sing?
I was tell, I was telling, I was telling Keith when he was sitting back there by me that, near him and the clerk, you hear a lot of shuffling. Back where I sit, you hear the shuffling of paperwork. So, I'm, it's not you, it's your microphone does not hear your voice. You and, um, Dick and, uh, Mr. Johnson.
That's by design.
Right. Now, when you, when you go to the mayor, everybody hears, so.
And I don't need a microphone.
And he doesn't need the microphone, so let's shove all his over there, but I, I'm just saying the paperwork is some of the issue. I don't, I don't have that much with-
That's the multi-directional microphone. I mean, that's what's supposed to happen.
Microphones, yeah. Yeah.
There, there should be, there, there should be a microphone here and it should pick me up.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's what you hear, I think, is, is, is that.
I wondered if you shouldn't have something like the mousepads or something to keep the noise.
Oh, literature.
Well, I think, I think the mayor is right. We've got, we've got updated microphones that don't go with the system that's back there anymore.
Yeah, and we have an antiquated, uh, cabinet of hardware right up there that just doesn't work.
Yes, yes. It is.
That's all, I just wanted to bring up the, you know.
All right.
Is it time for Kim Geller to?
Yes.
Chat about the House bill that we, she's got three hours under her belt, but she has four hours.
And I'll just go in my office and get the two things.
The floor is yours, Kim. Give us all your knowledge.
Well, last year we had that House bill six oh one. That was, you know, run the legislative, um, and, um, they didn't get that passed, and now House, they, the House bill five, they've renumbered it. They tweaked a couple of things, but there's some pretty serious issues on there that can be very detrimental to our income to the city. So we need to take a stance and let them know how we feel, because if we say or do nothing, then they just think you're all right with it. And I know the mayor and, uh, other mayors around here have met with some of the, um, senators and the House representatives and-
I think I discussed with you guys before, back in December, about every other month or so, a group of, uh, us local mayors, village administrators, township trustees and such, about every other month or so, we get together for lunch. We talk about things that are going on. We look for common solutions to common problems and that kind of thing. And, uh, the whole idea of the state, uh, passing legislation, uh, that would in any way impact our, uh, collection of local income tax was a hot topic throughout two thousand twelve. You may recall, early last year, uh, this body unanimously passed the resolution, uh, against the idea of the state collecting our local income tax, which at the end of two thousand eleven, beginning of two thousand twelve, that seemed to be the, the hot topic, you know? Well, there was, this body was by no means the only body in the state of Ohio to voice its opposition to that concept. So what sort of evolved out of that, which is, is House Bill six oh one, which was introduced in the one hundred twenty-ninth General Assembly, January first, beginning the one hundred thirtieth General Assembly, the legislation was reintroduced as House Bill five. There were some minor tweaks made to the periphery of the legislation, but the guts of it is still the same and, and still just as, uh, detrimental to, uh, the City of Heath's, uh, financial outlook as, as House Bill six oh one was. Back in December, this group of, uh, of us local leaders who have lunch, uh, every once in a while, we had lunch in Granville with Representatives Hayes and Hoddinger, where, uh, they were presented very detailed information, uh, that Kim and her counterparts in Newark and Hebron worked to put together, that outlined for each of us, for each of the two cities in the village, just what the financial impact would be, as well as going item by item through the bill to identify, okay, is this piece of the bill something that we, uh, think is a good thing? Is it something that's negative? Is this something that would maybe be neutral? Uh, and we presented that information to them. Um, as I said, it was reintroduced as House Bill five. The primary legislator behind, uh, this initiative is Representative Grossman. She's the former mayor of Grove City. She was made the House Majority Whip, um, in the, uh, in the Ohio House of Representatives, and this is her legislation. The whip, uh, part of that function, uh, if memory serves from my civics classes, is to kind of herd your caucus in one direction or another as it relates to legislation. So, um, here in Licking County, uh, we continue to be, uh, to, to try to voice opposition to House Bill five. Trying to think, Kim. We're looking at about a seven hundred thousand dollar a year hit just in our, in, in the net operating loss.
We don't allow it right now.
Yeah.
Like, if a business has a, a loss this year of a hundred thousand that just exists on its own, and then next year if they had a, they had a gain of twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand, they would pay on that gain. They can't carry that four dollars, set it, that would, we would lose a lot.
Yeah. The idea behind this-
We can't prove.
The idea behind this legislation is to have more uniformity in local income tax collection. And the, and, and, and that would be of benefit to businesses. Um, I don't think you will find any local government leader in the state of Ohio who is opposed to the idea of there being some degree of greater uniformity. Because if that, uh, if any improvement among uni, uh, uh, you know, along the lines of uniformity are beneficial to businesses, then that benefits the state, that benefits the cities where these businesses are either looking to locate or expand or whatever. So I don't think you'll find anybody in the state who's opposed to the concept of uniformity. However, the legislation in House Bill five would be such a financial hit to a lot of local governments, as well as a, an increase in the, uh, state, um, control over the local income tax process. And in a lot of respects, a trampling on the concept of home rule, um, that House Bill five, as it's drafted, uh, should be, in my opinion, unacceptable to about every local government that there is in the state. Um, the Ohio Municipal League has worked with, um, uh, Kim's counterparts throughout the state. The Ohio Municipal League has actually, for some time, been offering suggestions on areas where uniformity can be made, uh, can be achieved, that, uh, that I think everybody can agree upon. And, you know, the, the feedback that I've provided to our, uh, state, uh, Representative Jay Hoddinger was that the General Assembly should focus on those areas where there's common agreement and get those done. And, but the, the push seems to continue in Columbus for House Bill five. Um, and that's why, you know, if, if you, if you take a minute to, to, to read that resolution, uh, that was drafted, what I did, I put that resolution together for your consideration, and I cobbled it together from various resolutions that have been passed by other councils throughout the state. Um, I put that together for your consideration, um, and I would, uh, I, I would ask that, uh, at our first meeting in May, when you vote on this, that, that, that it also receive, uh, unanimous approval of this resolution. Kim, talk a little bit about, I mean, the, the, the net operating loss carryover is obviously the big enchilada as far as your, as far as the financial impact to the city. Talk a little bit about some of the other stipulations and how it increases your costs and it ties your hands and, and that kind of thing.
Well, another item that they've had on here was like, we, every single, um, return that we get in our office, four, six thousand of them, if we look through each one of them individually audited and if something's missing at four or if we change anything, well, they're wanting us to send certified, first of all, to the person that we're gonna look at, and that's five dollars or something, uh, uh, an item before you even look at, and then if you do a change, they want you to send another certified letter for the change. That is gonna increase our costs by like six thousand six hundred and some percent.
Yeah, I wanna say it was, I wanna say it was over four thousand eight hundred percent, our, our postage costs were gonna increase.
It's gonna be, plus the time, I mean, we're a small office to per, prepare all those certified, you know.
So are they saying that you shouldn't be checking every return? You shouldn't be randomly doing audits or?
I think that they're wanting to make it as hard on us as possible, so we can, you know, we can say, okay, but-
I think the true intention, yeah. The true intention is to make it so-
So difficult for them to say, yeah.
That they say, hey, you know, like, oh, shit, you say, here, he say, yeah.
Take it, we don't want it.
What, what is their fee code to do this service for us? Because that's gonna, I'm sure they're gonna charge for that.
I'm sure that they would. That hasn't, that hasn't been out.
Yeah.
The whole picture right there is that it's-
There, there are, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, there are two service, Rita being one of them, and I can't remember the acronym for the other.
Yeah, C C A or something like that.
Okay. There are two private business services that do, that, that provide the service of local income tax collection for local governments in Ohio. As a matter of fact, Pataskala uses Rita, don't they? And maybe Johnstown does too, I can't remember.
Yes.
So that service exists. I, I could ask, you know, Mayor Butcher or Tim Boland how much they have to pay Rita for that service. My guess is they do pay.
Well, I'm sure the state, the, the end is gonna say, oh, by the way, we're, we're gonna retain this much of what we collected for our costs, our overhead, and that's just, that's just taken more away.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they just don't have the hands-on that we have with our, you know, our residents and delinquents and there, there's just no way of tracking people coming in and out, like, moving and out of apartments, and they're not gonna be able to, you know, do that type, you know, detail that we do at our, our office, you know, I just-
You know, if, trying to remember who I said this to recently. It may have been to, uh, may have been to the reporter from WCLT, because they recently, like, I don't think it was this past weekend, it may have been the weekend before, they ran some two or three minute thing where they have a couple, one or two quotes from me, from Mayor Hall, from Steve Stillwell, who's the village, uh, manager in, in, in Granville. And I think Representative Hoddinger was quoted in that as well. If uniformity is so critical as it relates to the net operating loss, if the idea of uniformity is so extremely vital for business, uh, development in the state of Ohio, you can achieve that same uniformity by eliminating any loss carryover. You can put a stipulation in there that nobody can do a loss carryover. We don't do a loss carryover. Newark does not do a loss carryover. Hebron does a three-year loss, loss carry forward. If uniformity is so extremely vital, you can achieve that by eliminating all loss carryforwards for any local government in the state of Ohio. It's a uniform policy. So uniformity can be achieved without a seven hundred thousand dollar, uh, hit to our budget. Um, I don't know that that's the interests that they have at heart with the five-year loss carryforward. And you'll hear this too, from some of the proponents of, of, of House Bill five. When we tell you a number like seven hundred thousand dollars, you'll hear proponents say, well, we're exaggerating. Last fall, Kim and her staff went through every single business tax return filing from the previous year to come up with that seven hundred thousand dollar figure. I can assure you that if a five-year loss carryforward is implemented, there will be no business in the state of Ohio that'll ever pay a profit tax again. You can show a paper profit loss on your business and then carry that pro, that loss forward for five years to write your profits off on. So when we say seven hundred thousand, we're not pulling that out of the sky. Our people plowed through each business tax return from the previous year to come up with that figure. Now, that was when they did the analysis on House Bill six oh one. Clearly, since House Bill five was introduced, our folks in our tax department have been a little busy, uh, right up to today, and will be for weeks ahead. Um, so a similar item by item legislative breakdown has not been completed by any of the communities in Licking County on House Bill five. But the, but like I said, the changes were minimal and on the periphery.
I did wanna bring one more up. They also changed, you know how like your contractors come in to your city and they do roadwork and they're here for so long? Right now, ours is like a twelve-day rule, so like if they're here like twelve days, then they, yeah, then their wages are taxed more, they have to like, um, file a business return and it goes retro back to day one. Well, they wanna change that to twenty days. Not and note, and on the twenty-first day it would start and it would not be retroactive, so they can just keep rotating crews.
Yeah. So after nineteen days, you rotate a new crew of individuals in, and you don't have to deal with that.
I think it's giving taxation to certain, you know, qualities or people, and that's, you know, that's not fair. That's not fair.
Yep. And I'm gonna use the right word, but the, uh, the representative who proposed the legislation, I just wonder who her driving force is, who's behind it? Because, I mean, it's not what her, I just can't, there's somebody behind the whole thing, one who's gonna, to, to push us this direction. This is a money grab, to me. I mean, I'm-
It's from us.
That's right. And we're, we're struggling, we're struggling enough, the minutes passed, we're struggling enough to get to it.
Big thanks to them.
It's, it's project.
Grossman.
Yeah.
And is it Henny?
Yeah.
Is that the other representative that, that signed?
Yeah, Henny.
Yeah, but Grossman is, she's, she was the former mayor of Grove City.
By far?
No.
No.
Um, if, if you look on the resolution, one of the things that it says is, whereas the recent reduction of local government funds, the elimination of the estate tax, and the elimination of the promised reimbursement for the loss of revenues because of the repeal of the tangible property taxes will result in a loss of over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in annual revenue for the City Heath. These are things in the past two years, yeah, that's right, in the past two years, that have taken place out of Columbus. That have had this kind of, and Keith and Linda Richards and I, we huddled over that figure. I think that four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar figure is conservative. Keith, would you agree? So that's the hit that Columbus has already given us. They want to, like I said, just through the loss carryforward, uh, impact us by another seven hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that would be a, that would be in excess of a twelve percent hit to our revenue each year. How do you plan for that? How do you adjust for that? How do you continue to provide- How do you continue to provide anywhere near the same level of service that local governments have to provide the people of Ohio when you're, you're not home too?
And if there's some magician who can show you a way of doing it, of taking care of these things, have Houdini step forward.
Have Grossman show you.
Yeah, let her show.
Schaefer, Hoddinger, where is their position?
Um, we, we, we've met previously with Senator Schaefer, um, here in this room. He was gracious enough with his time, uh, a few months back to, to have a conversation with us about it. We shared with him the same information that this group had shared with Representatives Hayes and Hoddinger. Um, my sense at the time was that Senator Schaefer was a bit skeptical. About, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, I'm not.
With reservation skeptical.
Yeah, you know.
Any audio?
Um, I don't know. A, a, um, a, a little bit cloudier picture, um, there on, on the House side, I don't know. I think these representatives are being, I think they're being, uh, they're getting information that says, oh, these local governments are exaggerating what this impact is gonna be. And that's why I'm telling you, this is not an exaggeration as it relates to the city of Pete, because they went through every.
So did North and so did.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Hebron's percentage of revenue loss was a little bit more than ours, if I recall. Newark's percentage of loss was a little less than ours. But if I recall, just from loss carryforward, Newark's was at about one point two million, something like that.
And possibly more, cause they didn't get through every, she said that was conservative.
Yeah. So, um, it's been a while since we've talked in detail about this issue. I believe that when, uh, the State House has hashed through and completed the process of the budget, this House Bill Five will be one of the things that will be focused on. Um, I've been, uh, I've been outspoken about my feelings on it and I can assure you that I am not alone among Lickin County local government leaders. Um, and I communicated to the Ohio Municipal League that if they felt it would be a benefit to have, uh, me come and speak to the, what will probably be the House Ways and Means Committee that this bill would come through. If they feel as though it would be helpful to have me, uh, speak in regards to this topic, I would. If they help, thought it would be helpful to have anybody else in Lickin County speak to the topic, I would encourage them, uh, you know, any other local leaders to, to do so as well, so. But I, I, I know this is gonna be coming to a head and so that's why we put together this resolution for this body's consideration. Um, it does not need action tonight. I think you could wait and hold it till the next council meeting to vote on it. If you have any questions about it, ask him, ask Keith, ask me. Um, cause we've been looking at this for some time.
I'd just like to, hope to point out that maybe, uh, three other gentlemen should be involved in this. Our county officials should be coming to the aid of these entities in this county.
This, the House Bill Five does not impact at all.
It does not impact that part. Mr. Mayor, I think that they should be in our court. Because hey, it's gonna hurt this whole county if it tears into these cities of Pete, Hebron and that. They should become aware and say, hey, we're behind you, if nothing else.
I, I understand the point you're making, yeah.
Just a question, I'm sure I can't know the answer, but can you tell the, the feedback from the chamber on their budget?
Um, uh, myself, Mayor Hall, what's the Newark Tax Commissioner's name? Barb. Myself, Mayor Hall and Barb spoke before the Chamber of Commerce's Government Committee, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, something like that. Um, my understanding is that representatives from the Ohio Chamber of Commerce met with them first and then the three of us met with them immediately afterward on this topic. Um, I have not, uh, I have not heard anything back from the chamber as far as any decision that the Government Committee made either to support House Bill Five, to oppose House Bill Five, or to say nothing on the topic. However, today was the first day that I saw Sherri Hoddinger, um, in a while, I, so I, and, and we were in a Grohl Lickin County Board Meeting, so I, I didn't, I didn't roach the topic. She's been out of town, uh, she participated in the trip to Ireland. Uh, so she's been out of town.
You know, you would, you would think that when they always said, think about it and look at repercussion, that would come from this. When you look at, uh, talking about contractors, where they could rotate crews in and out within their twenty days and, and the carryover, being a, the small business owner, you think, oh, carryover, that'd be nice. But really, and they, if, if, if we start signing these benefits and they strip this money out of our projects, our fund, our, our general fund, then we're not gonna have contractors in the city working, cause we're not gonna have any money to do any work. It's just, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna.
Your employees aren't gonna be able to get to work, because the streets are gonna be impassable. Your delivery trucks will be sliding all over the roads, because they're gonna be icy. You know, the, the police and fire protection that you enjoy as a local business are gonna be in jeopardy.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are big ramifications to this, other than just the in-your-face, you know, aspect of it.
I mean, like, for big business, it's like, oh, this is good, but I don't think it'll be good at the end.
So for your consideration.
Anything else for Kim? Anything else for Finance Committee?
Thanks, Kim.
Sure.
So, fix. Wanna do a five-minute break and then we'll do caucus? Go ahead and open that door if you want. David, open that door. Thanks, Matt. Mayor? I called Paige, brought in her little speaker system. We do have a microphone and a speaker. Did you really?
We know you're talking on it, you don't know.
My carrying machine is just an amp and a thing, but you can hear it.
Is Paige here?
Paige is here.
We actually have those people.
That's where I left, when I left, I was making my call and she said, well, she might have left, I don't know, she's still.
Oh, okay.
But.
Mister.
As long as he doesn't sing.
Yeah. But at least, and, and the court, I think it's long enough that if, if we wanna pass it to individual members up, up the top. I think our mic, especially since we're up there, the accu picks off, it's okay, I think. But I'm saying if it's. Unless you're looking down in the. Right. If you're looking out ahead and projecting, it's not bad. It's that somebody at the podium that's facing us. Yeah. People behind us. Well, now they can, cause I got the speaker like sitting right in front of where I'm at, so it should be okay. Okay.
And if you know, you know, within your, like, organization, if you have any class of drug.
Yeah, I think they promise, they had a coffee, got their big. All the. Yeah, the guy spoke.
The winner.
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Oh, I had a long day today.
Uh, my.
I think my wife called me this morning, I didn't get the message, I saw it on. Did you hire your people yet?
Down there and it says, ask him. And then in the meeting, you said you were hiring them this week.
Yeah. I was talking to old Mark. Mark worked last year. Played baseball. I can't. For.
Heath Lakewood?
Four years ago.
Heath Lakewood?
Lakewood. Clark. I talked to Amys Saturday, he stopped.
Well, I would say if, if they're returning, they're, uh.
Wow, I said, did you do anything wrong enough to get rehired?
No. No.
Go ahead, let, I said, did you put me down as a representative?
Yes, I did, I said, that could be a mistake.
I, uh, I, I looked at the ones we didn't hire, I didn't recognize any of their names, so I would. It's also fifteen. Where, where's Tim at?
You ready? I'll get the rest, you know, he's doing that. Three minutes, three minutes.
Really? That's good, that's always a good. Catholics had a Lakewood fifth inning. Chase was pitching, he pitched tonight, I don't know how he did.
Who were they playing?
Valley. Uh, we can't score, we can't field, other than that, we're fine.
When this year's freshmen are seniors, we should dominate in sports. Looking at, looking at the.
And you're changing the whole coaching staff a little bit?
Well, you know what, here's the thing, if, if this year's freshmen are seniors, if we're not dominating.
Smooth. Nothing will happen.
Yeah.
Nothing ever does that. Same old story, over and over and over.
That's how you really feel.
Is that thing still on? Yeah, it's being broadcast in schools.
You know Bob won the color copy?
So I would say.
Do I want a color copy?
Yeah, Bob won, hang on. Well, you know what? I've got, I've, I've got the books in my office, why don't I just? All right. Talk to you later. Bye. Did you hear what I said to Paige? I said, so we had to bring someone all the way in from Hollywood to take care of this. How's she doing out there?
Doing all right, she's up now.
Yeah.
For a while. She's gonna work for pool maybe.
Oh, is that right? She's going to do it again? Oh, okay.
And she fingers crossed, huh?
Well, that's kinda like the fullback.
She's going back?
Well, I, she can go back for next, I mean, the next season, but if she wants to do some difference, then she's checking out her, different possibilities.
Just don't pummel.
That's where I went last, remember when I went two weeks ago? When I did a drive back?
Were you going?
Yeah, you missed me?
Well, they went school.
I thought you were crying, cause I was sad as a.
That's what it was.
Tears of joy, woman.
We're next in a carving, we're eating, going, set out of love, so and so, you know. On the way back, it's.
She's gonna go get another biker front, so we can have one up front, plus the one there.
Bag of money fell out.
Needed, but. She, she'd actually.
They counted it, fifty thousand dollars. And, uh.
So Jessica's room still standing?
She said, what we gonna do? And he said, well, we gotta report it. She said, I'm not.
Now Jessica's room's not, cause we brought her stuff, she put it in Jessica's room. So you open, you go in the room and you stop.
Wasn't very long, we had to please start calling the community.
Suitcases, that's anything.
And, um, you know, they, they didn't hear people say, the old people.
She didn't, she didn't like unpack.
Well, they come at their house.
Cause it's probably no room, it's probably last.
You guys see any money? Small office, brakes truck. The old guy said, yeah. Well, he asked me, why first to go, I didn't see a thing. Damn, he's just, sure did. Said, on the way back to school, I saw it, one cop says, come on, I'm outta here.
They don't believe us.
Yeah, I heard somebody stop by my mom's house, she, she leaves.
Brian, you ready? Everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, invocation, pledge allegiance is gonna be by Mr. Morrow, since he raises hand first.
He wanted to raise his person.
No. Everybody's here, approval of minutes and election appointments, we have the, uh, Heath North Lickin County Port Authority.
Reappointing Frank Flynn.
And then Heath Committee Reinvestment Arts Council, which is Skip Pepner. And then we're also gonna have a, uh, civil service. Yes, Ms. McKinney. Is there, will you say that, is there, do we have to vote? Um, here's what it is, I, I'll make the recommendation to, to counsel and then you'll have to vote on that. Okay. I don't know if that need, should that be a roll call vote? What do you think? Roll call or just all favor I?
All favor.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Who is it? Civil Service?
Yes.
Who, who is it?
Um. Last name's McKinney, first name starts with N, so you can have a little lock.
See if I can still.
She lives in the second ward, which is, uh, Bill Johns, who is no relation to me, lives in Fox Run. He, uh, because of work, um, uh, his time, he, he really, it was becoming very.
Shelley McKinney.
Hey, hello, Shelley. It was becoming difficult for him to attend, so he resigned from the Civil Service Commission. Um, Shelley was actually recommended to me by Deb Crane, I talked to her last week. Um, she had some questions about, you know, what the Civil Service Commission does and everything. I gave her the information, told her, actually, I said, if you have any other questions, you can either talk to David or you can talk to Deb Crane, who recommended her. Um, but I talked to her, she was excited, you know, about the opportunity to do it. She's, uh, which is a, a big part of, I guess, appointing somebody, is they're actually excited to do it, so. I talked to her, I thought she'd be a great appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Let me ask the logistics, when I get to that, should I say Civil Service Commission appointment? Mayor Johnson, you say I'd like to appoint Shelley McKinney? I'd like to make a recommendation. Make recommendation, and then I have one of the council members make a motion to accept that recommendation. So the three are. Second, do it that way, and then all favor I. Okay. There's one of them. So I said. The three of them are Paul and who's the? Um.
Huh?
No, 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 on the Civil Service Commission. Um.
You know, this is the only partisan thing that the city does.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes, Paul Peterson. I look, yeah, the, uh, the, this is the only thing in charter that has anything to do with, with, with party. Um, it's like, you can't have more than two appointees from any one political party. So not only did I have to, I don't even know that it stipulates that you have to have one individual from each ward, but I think that's what we've done and I think it's a good practice. So I actually had to go to the Board of Elections website and make sure that we were adhering to that.
I just, I just wanted to ask, ask the.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so that takes care of that. Uh, those special orders committees, unfinished visitors, it looks like we could have a lot of visitors speak and stuff. Yeah. I tried to get them to speak during the committee meeting, I'm sorry, but I tried. Yeah. Now, how, how, okay, I'm gonna ask you guys, how tolerant or intolerant or are you, you want me to be as far as length of time we let them speak? Normally, I don't hear many visitors, I mean.
We're trying to move this out of here and into the, yeah, to the Arch Council, the.
The law.
If, if it's not a jurisdiction, then we got it.
Gotta put a stop to it.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, before everyone speaks, I'll say, you know, the first time around, maybe five minutes or something like that. You know, we, I'll let everyone speak, you know, it's open meeting, let them speak, but as soon as it kinda gets redundant or.
I, I think Carolyn on the Arch Council should have one answer. Terred information.
To let her.
She should share.
Beyond that, I don't know. Okay, all right, okay.
That's the main thing, I feel, I really believe it. We are not the ones that shouldn't be getting blasted.
Well, I don't know if we're getting blasted or not, I don't know what you're gonna say, which.
Don't, yeah, don't prejudge what people are saying.
Okay. All right, then committee reports, everyone's got their committee reports, then introductory order says twenty-nine, uh, we're gonna waive it, right?
Yes.
And then that is, uh, treatment plan, so that's Morrow. Then the next one we're gonna waive also, and that's Morrow. Then the next one we're gonna waive, and that's Brian Johnson. Then the next one, we're gonna waive, and that's Brian Johnson. Then the next one, we're gonna let go to the second reading, a little bit. The next one, we're gonna give, waive it or not? That's to do with the council's payment longevity thing?
No reason to waive it.
Okay, we're gonna hold it then. Go to the next one, we're going to. What about the CRA reinvestment, just hold it? Yeah, what, there's, are there any others that we need to waive or just hold all the rest?
Advertises for bids, meaning land speed.
I'd like to, I'd like to waive that, we need to get that rolling. Okay, we're gonna hold the 34, but waive 35. Who's gonna do the meaning, is that a streets thing or is that a part? It's, uh, I, I've done, John Broth and Bob Geller have worked on that together as far as.
I've put it under.
Have you?
I have 3J.
Yeah. Definitely will do it then.
Waive the second one now?
Yes, please. Definitely's gonna waive that. 36 is the C-A-U-V, just hold it. Yeah. Uh, then the men that codified ordinance on the next reading, just hold them. Those are the zoning, uh, amount changes, right, Dave?
They just hold that.
Yeah, we can hold that. Okay, uh, resolu- no, reading the second, uh, resolutions on first reading, we're gonna hold that, select people. Look at, then none on second reading, then the reports to committees, reading the bids, you got that, Keith?
I don't have any bids to read.
You got chemicals?
Four bids?
You wanna ju- just read those things or?
I don't have some bids to read. Uh, Lynn has those, I. I would be glad to have those, those usually, they're usually written down in this.
The amount, what they are.
You may have one better, you may have them in the next 10 minutes from here. I may, if, if I've got them, I'll read them.
Okay. See what happens. All right, anything else? If not, okay. Does we nothing?
Nothing like.
Does we nothing like the lines, Dan? I wouldn't, I wouldn't involve them, that was before my time and I find this, I, I.
We got 10 minutes.
You have 10 minutes.